I'd like to call this meeting to an end at this time. Under the Sunshine Law, the Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to an end. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Falls of 1975 and title of the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying, the retrospect as well as posting notices in the Borough Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Mary Bulks School, and in Bigham School, Grace Downey School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. At this time, would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I collectively pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the government which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Ms. Dair, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Beebe.
Here.
Mr. Buchan.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Fairey.
Here.
Mr. Higlyazzo.
Here.
Ms. Gazarella, Ms. Spalding, with the form. And present also is our Superintendent Mark Ahuchi, Dr. McCarron, Mrs. Administrator, Supervisor of Strategic Destruction, Jada Azzi, Principal Bigham Downey, Steve Pele, Principal Mary Bulks, Mr. Christie is not here this evening, Laura Heinz is our Child Study Team Supervisor, and Butch Ruder. Let's see here. He is here. Probably. Fine answer. Oh, yeah, that's, I'm sorry. The number of our minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the work study session for February 25th and the regular meeting February 25th.
Any questions? Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buchan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Fairey.
Yes.
Mr. Higlyazzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion for financial report.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report in February. I'll second it.
Any questions? Roll call vote, Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buchan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Fairey.
Yes.
Mr. Higlyazzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Before we move on to recognizing any citizens that are here this evening, we do have a small little program for a nice young man that I got to meet last week, and I'll turn it over to our Superintendent. It's about Hunter Robinson.
Hunter, if you want to stand up for us a little bit?
Okay. Every year, the Camden County School Boards Association runs an eighth grade dialogue. Mr. Pele's going to have it up to me to speak without that. Introduce Hunter, maybe tell a plenty of stories. Go on, Hunter. As Mr. I said, every year, each middle school from the whole county sends representative, one student to represent their middle schools, to talk about all the good things that are going on in Camden County middle schools, also to answer some questions about where we can improve. It's a nice evening. Mr. Buchan set of board members, Hunter's parents attended, and it's a fulfilling evening because you get to hear a lot of quality answers from a lot of quality kids. So, we're proud to have you represent us. Now I'm going to put you on the spot once again, maybe a few more times, and then you just tell everybody a little bit, maybe a question or two you answered, and then maybe they'll have a question for you. Good, Hunter.
All right. Well, there are a lot of kids there to start off with. We all went up on the stage. We sat down. Whenever we wanted to answer the question, we just raised our hand, and they gave us the like. I wanted questions.
Did they ask if you felt like you were prepared for the next level at all?
Yeah, they did ask some questions about what would I like to do when I'm in high school. I said, I forget what I said. I said...
What else should you tell, maybe just tell the board a couple of things that you appreciated about your experience here at Bulks, maybe some staff members who made a difference, just something short like that.
It was a really, it was like, it was a good education. You didn't, you weren't always ignored. Like, some other schools, you're not always, the questions aren't always answered. The teachers were always kind. They were never mean. I usually may never got attention, but some of them getting annoyed over. It was like, it was like hard, but to the point where it needed to be hard. So, it like, it helped you. It will help you going on.
And did you feel like it was a safe experience?
Yes.
Did you feel like you could walk around the hallways, be yourself, and ask questions?
Yeah, be completely safe, yeah. Be myself, walk around the hallway.
Great. We appreciate you representing us. Board members, anybody have any questions? You just want to ask Hunter about, maybe about the dialogue at night, or maybe even here.
I have a question. Of course. Hi, John. First, actually representing us, and number two, is there anything that you would change about where you go to school at?
Almost said a principal.
Not the teachers, all the teachers are good. I like all the teachers.
That's good.
The classrooms are friendly. They were a good environment to teach, school, or to learn. Yeah, not really.
Not really? Well, that's good.
Who is your favorite middle school teacher? Middle school teacher? Probably right now, Mrs. Newhart. She like, she like pushes me.
Chances you.
Yeah. But I want to go along with her.
Thank you.
We appreciate you representing us. As everyone in this room knows, our staff does work very hard, but it takes a lot from the students and a lot from the people at home. So, we thank the parents, and we look forward to, you take the next step. He can see you go, but you're already as good as a con. Okay, and our next group, Mr. Buchan, or do you want to...
Linda Schreiber with our Rube Goldberg competition.
Should I bring all this too?
Oh, yeah.
I can introduce them. Thank them for the reference.
We don't want to block the board. I guess I'll come first. So, I found out about this new opportunity that I was able to bring a bunch of middle school students to from Runnymede, and what it was called is a Rube Goldberg competition. It's actually been going on across the world for years. There's never been a competition in Philadelphia, but this year was the first annual competition in Philadelphia, and it was only about six high, six middle schools were there, and a couple of high schools. I think they also opened it up to some colleges, and none of them responded, but hopefully next year will be a little bit bigger of a competition. Basically, I started out with having some students from my advisory work on the Rube Goldberg machine, and then extended it with my seventh graders, and then eventually extended it as an after-school project, because it was a bigger undertaking than I originally had thought, but that was okay. The students here and another student who couldn't be here tonight came with me, or we actually all met there. We were in Wynwood on March 14th at a friend's school, and we competed against the other schools. There was a panel of 10 judges. One of them was Glenn Hurricane Schwartz, which was really exciting to see. And we have a video showing what we did. Basically, what a Rube Goldberg machine is, in case you don't know, it's sort of like a ridiculously silly machine that at the end does something really simple. So, it's sort of like the game Mousetrap, if you've ever played Mousetrap. So, the students had to have at least 20 steps in the machine. It could have up to 75, and at the end, it was supposed to erase a chalkboard. And so, every year, it's a different task. Last year, it was to zip and zipper. We don't know what next year's is, but we're hoping to have a team next year as well. They'll announce it in August. And we, based on our experiences, came up with some new ideas of ways that we can improve it, which we can talk about later. If you guys want to ask us that. So, here's the video, and then I think a few of the students do want to tell you a little bit about their experience, and then we're open for questions. Okay. So, this is Angela Murray, Julia Patrangelo, Gianna Malnato, and Connor Robinson. So, thank you very much. Okay, any of you guys want to come in? I think Julia has the third question. She's got to answer questions. Anybody have any questions for them?
So, my question is, compared to the other teams that were there, what did you do better and what did you take away that maybe they did better in their approach?
They had like a lot of...
Well, first compare yourself to other middle schools, right?
Right.
Because there was definitely a marked difference between high schools and middle schools.
The high schools had a lot more equipment and the heavy...
One of them had a mannequin shoe.
Yeah. And they had like these enormous ladders and all this electric extra. They were using drills.
So, we did have drills too. The custodian helped us out, which I've bothered you probably a hundred times. Can you cut this? Can you put this together? So, he helped us a lot.
Butch loves those.
Yes. I was like, probably leave me.
We use a lot more simple things. They're a lot easier to find, I guess, than most Rube Goldberg machines. We definitely had a lot of great students who were great problem solvers, so we, so we like sort of got all the problems. Like, we watched it over and over again just to find the problems and solve it. We used a lot of tape. That's very good, sure.
And hot glue.
And hot glue, yes. Never forget about the hot glue.
Doesn't work when you want it to.
We tried to very much keep with the theme than a lot of the other groups, because I saw this one group, but they didn't really have the theme. Didn't really seem to stick with the theme most.
So, you had to have a theme, like your, because she had a theme, so ours was Toy Story, because we had so many toys in it, and then we had a lot of like the different characters in Toy Story there, so we had to try to keep with that.
We also asked a lot of teachers for equipment, and they did help us out with that, so...
Yeah, we bothered the preschools, that's why. Also, too, we found out when we were there that five other schools that were enrolled in the competition had backed out that week. So, they were really happy that the schools that did come did sign up, you know, they came even if their, you know, if their machines weren't perfect. So, that I think says a lot, too, because I know there were times where we were a little nervous.
Yeah, one time it was really close to winning, and...
And we had, you know, and it was a long day. We had to be there at seven in the morning, and it was about a half hour away, so we left at 6:30 in the morning, and we were there till almost two or three in the afternoon. So, it was a long day.
I couldn't stay up to do the competition.
Yep. Yeah. Any...
Other question?
How do you think this experience helped you work together as a team?
Well, there's definitely, like I said, a lot of problem solving, so you sort of have to like look at, everybody has to look at like different angles. You need like those different minds that think in different ways to sort of fix the problem and to make it look like in the short limits that we had, so...
And towards the beginning of the project, everyone had a different idea to start to build on whatever they wanted to do for their particular step, and we needed to work in groups, so you couldn't just everyone do their own idea, because we didn't have enough equipment or time for that. So, you needed to pick one, which took a lot of working things out.
And at one point, we had a bunch of students from the seventh grade classes come up with their own mini Rube Goldberg machines, and then they connected it to the main Rube Goldberg machine, so it did help us with a few like the main not having enough steps problem.
So, we kind of took from the other class ideas as well, and then brought that into the after-school project.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Please don't apologize.
I just wanted to ask one question. This was a competition. How many other schools participated, and where did you fall in the awards?
So, there were six, there were six middle schools, and there was only a first prize, so we didn't get it.
We had mechanical points. We can't compete with that.
There were other prizes. There was a prize for like the most interesting step.
Yeah, we didn't get that either.
It was the schools that had...
It was Mentos and Soda.
There was like an engineering club that did really well, and the school that had the most interesting step was the host school. There's a completely different format in their school. It was a friend's school, so they're, I'm assuming that they probably had...
More resources.
Different resources, different time allotment towards it, you know, so...
Yeah, they also...
But I didn't feel like we were that far behind.
Yes.
I didn't think...
A lot of the schools have like special like science groups where they, where they took these, these really smart people and like made them build something, which is really hard to compete with.
Well, I was thinking for next year, if we were to do this, to kind of designate it more as an after-school activity.
Yeah.
Where we would stay for longer periods of time and work on it instead of doing it in class.
Yeah, because my...
Because I think we need to devote more time to that.
Because during like the three half days, we stayed for like at least two hours after school every time to get the project done.
I did notice that it seemed like we spent a lot less time on ours than most of the other ones did.
And a lot of the kids recruited for it, too. They didn't like, like their parents didn't make them want to do it or anything. They recruited to do it just like they thought.
And there were a few homeschool groups, too. So, it wasn't just all...
One or two.
Yeah. It wasn't just all school. And our other issue is, I think we, we were kind of hoping maybe next year we could designate a room, or we could kind of keep it set up, and we wouldn't have to take it down. Instead of that, that was another obstacle that...
Yeah, because they have their rec basketball team, so you always find like things like knockdown or pieces missing.
That's a hard work.
Friends' balls are fragile, projects say that.
And we kept moving from there.
You know, because you were there this first time, now you'll know what you'll have to do for next year.
Absolutely.
And are you coming back next year, or are you going on to high school?
I mean, I am. Three of them will be here next year. I'll be here next year. Three of them will be here next year.
Good. See, so you can build on that experience.
Yep, absolutely.
Mr. Buchan, did you have something?
Well, I was going, basically going over what she just said, what were, and what you said earlier, what were some of the things that you saw other of the students do that you would do? Kind of ideas that you get that you would want to bring to yours next year?
They definitely had a lot of like mechanical stuff, so, and we just had like a bunch of like marbles and domes, so we were pretty unprepared for that, but...
And we had a tiny little chalkboard, and those were all...
And Connor, I don't know if you heard, he said he would like to include some electrical circuits in there as well, so I think that would be really cool.
It's a lot better than a whole stepful of books.
Oh, my God, that was terrible.
Yeah. We spent two days trying to rebuild it.
So many books.
And then we just changed it.
So many books.
Yeah, we just totally pushed it out of the way. Too many steps. Yeah.
Well, we appreciate your initiative. We appreciate your creativity. Miss Schreiber, we appreciate your time, along with the parents who are involved. Appreciate it, everybody.
Love you.
We are now at a portion of a board meeting where we will recognize citizens for comments who must be agenda items only at this time. The public is reminded that they should attempt to resolve problems and or complaints through initial contact with the staff member, Matthew Bob there is, and the chief school administrator, practice petitioning the Board of Education. Complaints should only be brought to the board after the appropriate school staff has had a reasonable opportunity to go solve this problem at the employee level. State contributors to topics that are addressed on our agenda at this time, please recognize yourself by your address and your name, and at this time, it's just for agenda item only. Saint Knut? Secretary of General's report?
Currently, we just did final touches on the 1516 school budget and working with the county business administrator for that to be approved. That will be open for public hearing at the April board meeting during the six o'clock session. I attended a couple Camden County budget workshops prior to that submission, and roundtable meetings, most of which all focused around budget, since that's what every school district is currently focusing on in the state of New Jersey at this time. And then also, we're in the process of putting together our RFPs, which is Request for Proposals for Services within the District, which will be presented and reviewed prior to announcing for the 1516 school year coming up.
Thank you very much. Superintendent? Just a couple of things I want to discuss. We did complete the first round of the MARC assessment. I think we stayed in the board faculty work session, completed that last week. I appreciate all the administrators' work and time in doing that, also the kids. They were very receptive to it. They did the best they could. There were some minor glitches, and I was very impressed with the patience they would demonstrate. If there was a glitch on their computer, they weren't freaking out. Staff wasn't freaking out. It was corrected, and they were able to take that again. And it was been a hot button issue as far as, you know, the implementation of the assessments, but we did the best we could. We're actually going to meet tomorrow as administrative team, review some of the things that we can enhance for the May end of year assessment as well. We had Mr. Tarashi here earlier, just want to recognize her publicly again for $10,000. They raised a family donation jump for her heart. Kids had a great time, as well as the conferences conducted last week. Two weeks ago. Two weeks ago. Appreciate everybody's efforts in that. Oh, snow, you're confused. Speaking of snow, we did make some adjustments to the calendar to add those days, we had a total of three days that we'll add on to the end of the school year. It's going to take us up to agree, we said June 15th for students, June 16th for staff, and we will have that out on the website tomorrow. We'll post that to Facebook, update parents, adjustments to the calendar. Okay. Any comments from the principals on your reports? We've had an opportunity to review them. Anything with special education at this time? PTA report?
I just wanted to remind, Christie asked me to remind everybody our basket option is the 17.
Yes.
We did send out our flyers for tickets. We can only sell 300 tickets, so if you don't believe anybody, you are getting tickets. That's the school, college school, which the school secretary is now. Anyone who has a group of 10, then we reserve tables. We have a reserved table to, you know, begin direction early to make sure you get a table when everybody's in together. Things seem to be going well. If you know anybody that has things that they like to donate, gift cards, or if someone's cleaning, they have things, gifts they got and they're not using, they want to donate it to them, or take anyone anything they have to donate. We average about 125 baskets. We have about 10 specials, and sometimes we have an in-between kind of special. It depends what donations we get. So, everything seems to be moving in a good direction, and hopefully we'll see that.
I just want everyone to know, our board president is not here this evening. She is chaperoning the senior trip for trying to high school. That's why I'm sitting in, in trying to Runnymede, like as well as she does. Our board will once again make a contribution and add something for that. So, fellow board members that are here this evening, if you'd like to give your donation, if you have it available, we can surrender it to Dr. McCarron, and then when Sam gets back, they can take care of what they're going to put together for the basket for that today. Thank you. Camden County Education Services, I believe that's Patty Adair? Yes? She is unable to be here this evening. New Jersey School Board Association, I am the delegate for our board, and our next meeting is in May. I have not received the packet of any resolutions that are going to be addressed at the meeting at Mercy County College when we have the meeting. I used to get them in the month of April, so hopefully at our April board meeting, I can give you an idea of any resolutions, kind of review them with you in our work session, because I need to, I'm going to be voting on these resolutions. I want to be voting how this board feels towards those resolutions, not just... So, I'm optimistic, I'll have the information at our April meeting, I can share it with all of you prior to going up there to vote. Blackwater Spike Regional, that's Sam Spaulding, and she is not here, and there are no negotiations at this time. Property transportation. Need a motion to open up property transportation?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the items under property transportation. I'll second that.
Questions? This is using, it says fourth through sixth grade, the annual hockey, they don't do the sports up to sixth grade. I was writing it for somebody.
That's a variety club, right? So, it's certain annual hockey.
Didn't they just do older level one? Didn't they just finish, the older kids are on a separate one?
Well, my question, I guess I did it for all the kids, the annual hockey, you're saying that there's, I guess, the seventh and eighth grade?
Yeah, they're, they're doing that right now.
Any other questions? Roll call, Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buchan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Fairey.
Yes.
Mr. Higlyazzo. Motion passes. Okay. Personnel.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the items under personnel.
I'll second that. I guess I can do that. Any questions? Under those items that I would like to recognize, we have two retirees coming up. I wanted to thank these individuals. Mary Higlyazzo will be retiring as of June 30th, and we also received her resignation for retirement from James Warner, and once again, we'd like to thank them for their records here in the district, and wish them healthy and happy retirement. Roll call vote. Mr. Higlyazzo.
Yes.
Ms. Fairey.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Buchan.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is finesse. Motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the items under finesse.
Any questions on items 1 through 5? Roll call vote. Ms. Beebe. Mr. Buchan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Fairey.
Yes.
Mr. Higlyazzo. Motion passes. Curriculum.
Second.
Any questions for items 1 through 5?
I have a quick question. Number four and five. This class agreed 180 and Alex mathematics. Do you have any type of program of that sort for the younger grades?
In the younger grades, in mathematics, they have items that go along with the series that they have as interventions, and then in language literacy, they use the LLI, which is a level literacy, level literacy program that they use up through fifth grade. So, this addresses sixth to eighth, and it also ties in with what students then see when they go to the high school training. So, we'll be able to provide more data on our students to help them transition between the two schools.
Any other questions? Roll call vote. Mr. Higlyazzo.
Yes.
Ms. Fairey.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Buchan.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe. Motion passes. Okay. Next on the agenda is policies and public relations, and this will count as the first reading for policy revisions that are listed and that we discussed in our work session.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the items under policies and public relations.
Motion. Mr. Buchan? Any questions? Copies of the policies that were questioned and regulations have been given to each of you. So, as Mr. Buchan said, this is the first reading of those policies, so there will be a second reading for each of those policies and regulations listed at the next Board of Education meeting.
And that's when we can bring any questions or additions, changes.
And at that time, if you want to hold off on anything, that can be the board's decision if there's further discussion needed. The table of policy total public engagement.
But they're manual, so we have to have...
And you have to have two read. Yes, yes. Would it be helpful if in reading through those policies that we have to review, if we were to send your comments prior to the meeting?
Absolutely.
So, if there's any questions, you can find out prior to...
It was 3218, 4218, and then 8630. 3212 was attendance. This should be 3218, and 4218.
And 8630.
And then 8630. Those were the questions. 3212 wasn't requested. The requested ones were substance abuse and then lust. So, I need many copies of those that were questioned.
Any other questions? Another question for roll call vote, Ms. Beebe?
Yes.
Mr. Bachan?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Tremhendelazo? Motion passes. Okay, at this time, recognition of our citizens. The public is reminded that they should attempt to resolve problems out of complaints through this contact with the staff member or members involved therein and the chief school administrator. Prior to petitioning the Board of Education, complaints should only be brought to the board after the appropriate school staff has had a reasonable opportunity to resolve a problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited to a length of three minutes. The public is reminded that all public comments against a district employee must be made to a specific grievance process, and a description of this process may be found on the Board of Education policy filed code zero one six seven. This policy is available upon request from the Board Secretary. Any individual naming an employee in a complaint before the Board of Education without the employee's permission could be cited for violating that employee's civil and contractual rights. So at this time, the floor is open for any of our citizens attending the next meeting, any comments on any topics. Please, uh, identify yourself and your address.
Hi.
Should I stand?
Sure.
My name is Linda Hurd, two thirteen Irvin Avenue. I'm here, um, to offer my services to create, recreate a butterfly garden at the Downey School. Um, I don't know if most of you remember Mrs. Coyle. Uh, before she retired, she had this wonderful garden there, and when I was teaching at the young in third grade, I was able to take my children out into the garden and we found monarch eggs and caterpillars and supplementing from, from my garden, we released quite a few butterflies and, um, if you could just see the looks on their faces, they say a picture's worth a thousand words. This is the week to release one of them. Uh, but in any case, for those of you who aren't familiar with a monarch butterfly, I know people my age are, it's, they look like, it's really, they're really little miracles. They travel all the way from Canada to Mexico, three thousand miles. And people aren't really sure how they find their way back to the same forest that their ancestors went in, I ever haven't been here before. Um, I just saw this afternoon that the first, um, batch of them were seen leaving Mexico. They're on their way back up to the States. Um, we'll be getting the fourth or fifth generation. The only reason they come back is for milkweed. It's the only thing that they, the mommas will lay their eggs on. Um, and unfortunately, what's happening is they're, it's called a host plant. The milkweeds are being devastated, um, for a lot of reasons. Their habitats are being cut down for developments and laws. Um, out in the west where the, um, the farming goes on, Monsanto has created GMOs which are Roundup tolerant, and so they're spraying the fields with Roundup, which fills the milkweed. Um, and so it's up to each and every one of us if we're going to save these butterflies to do what we get in our backyard gardens. So, um, what I would like to do is create a monarch wave station at Downey School. Uh, I created one at the library. I got it certified. You have to, you have to plant the host plant, milkweed, and several, um, nectar plants. I would love to do that, but I would only do it under the promise that cream will not be put in. I went there during the summer and to see if there were any eggs, and I was about an hour too late. Um, the milkweed had been cut down and some cooled out and cream was put down throughout the garden. So I took some time and looked through the milkweed and I found, um, a couple little caterpillars and an egg which I saved and took home and, and raised them. I don't know what the effect of the cream will be this year, but I will do my best to get it up and, um, I had, I was told a couple of years ago that a neighbor had complained about the looks of it because the milkweed, it does grow a little bit wild. There were different kinds of milkweed that I could put in. It made it look a little bit more attractive. But I'm hoping that with the signs showing the butterfly and that it's a wave station and it's cyclical, people would be a little bit more observant and understand just how important this is. And again, it would be a place to take the children. And how many places do we have to take the children now to, to show them nature and to give them that love of nature? For me, um, for me, I, it opened up a whole new world. When I started planting native plants, I saw my first hummingbird moth. I never knew that a hummingbird moth existed. Um, even ladybugs. My garden is open to a whole host of things now that, that I never really experienced before. I know what tussock moth eggs look like, and, um, and I want to offer this to the children. So I'm hoping that you'll agree to let me take over this. Uh, I would need help in getting it watered however, because there is a lock on the, um, the hose there. Um, I donated two hundred dollars last year to EIRC who conducts these workshops. It's a two-day workshop, and I did have a letter sent out to the teachers that would have paid for two, two teachers to go to the two-day workshop. And, um, the director there, Brian Hay, said that he would provide other people with grants as well. Now, that was last year. I went to help conduct the workshop and nobody showed up, so I'm, I'm hoping that they're going to offer it again. Uh, they also have programs at EIRC called Voices from the Land, and what that does is it trains teachers to take children out on a walking path. It could be right out here and to create artwork from nature. And then they take pictures of the artwork that they create and, um, write poems or stories. We've got to get our kids reconnected with, with the land, so I'm hoping that you'll let me do this.
I have a question. Um, if, if the board were to approve this, when would you want to get started and, uh, at what point in the fall would you clear out the flower bed?
Well, what happens, I would get started in the spring. I have to see what naturally is going to come back up. Like I said, I don't know what damage the cream has done. Um, I would put in maybe three different nectar plants, um, flowers and so forth. Um, and then in the fall, being natural, well, what you do is you cut the milkweed back around the Fourth of July, and so new sprouts will come up. And then in the fall, I would, I would cut down, I would cut the milkweed back, but I would leave the cunning flowers because that supply seeds for the, um, for different birds. That's something else I didn't know. I used to go in and clear out my garden, deadhead everything. And now I have goldfinches and all kinds of birds landing on my dead, the dead seeds and, and eating them all winter long. So cool.
Okay. If, um, Mr. Sarco is good to see, by the way. But, uh, if you wouldn't mind, just reach out to Mrs. Yezzy, the principal of Bingham and Downey, and she can submit that if everything works out and goes well, we can submit for approval at the April meeting.
That would be great.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Yes?
Eleanor Kelly, one sixty-one Forest Avenue, was, was a woman in town. And this morning I had the pleasure of reading, uh, one hundred eighth-grade students, and, uh, it was an assembly in the old purpose room. And it was to introduce them to the youth mayor council that we run every year. They were very, very excited about it. It was a wonderful meeting, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Pilly and Mr. Ayamuchi. And I don't see Mr. Wink here.
Lawner, no matter.
Oh, well, tell, I, you know, thanks to all of you because it was really a great presentation and I think the children were very receptive. So hopefully we'll have a nice response. And the women's club was a very big supporter of that butterfly garden. Terry Sotterholm, she's, she passed. She died, but she was a big supporter of that garden. And, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll do whatever we can. Come to our club and present that because they would like to get on board again with that, okay?
I'd like to say it, tell you the short story about Terry. Um, the day that I signed my retirement papers, I was coming back from Trenton. My husband was driving me. I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, what have I done? Well, you know, maybe, maybe by Monday I can call him up and tell him I've changed my mind, and I was very unsettled about my decision. And all winter I had had black swallow, swallow tail. Chrysalis is on, on my porch. I don't know if I have a swallow tail here. They, here it is, the black one. They went her over. They don't migrate, and so I had cages of them on my porch. So when I came up to porch after signing my retirement papers, my husband said to me, uh, you have a butterfly. And I said, no, that's blue duct tape. I have a chrysalis hanging. And he said, no, no, you have a butterfly. And here she was.
Oh.
And I took it as a sign, like here she is, you know, spreading her wings, new chapter, and this is my time. And so I posted it on Facebook. I would, I mean, the two hours I was gone, and she was there from like October until the very day that I signed my papers. So I put it up on Facebook and Reggie Coyle calls me and she said, my hairs are standing up on one end of my arms. And she said, Linda, she said, there's a magical power with the swallow tail. She said, did I ever tell you the story about Terry, Terry Sotterholm? And I said, no. And she said, in the fall of one year, she brought Mrs. Coyle, uh, caterpillar. I said, do you know what this is? And Reggie didn't, and, but she put it in an aquarium and forgot about it. The chrysalis emerged into a butterfly, the butterfly came out the day that Terry passed.
Oh, oh, oh.
Is that amazing story?
Oh.
Magical butterflies.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for taking the time to come in today as well.
It was our pleasure, believe it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I just have one more question. Um, the Chromebooks for the summer. Uh, my granddaughter's been asking me what programs they're going to be offering, so I, I haven't heard, so I was just wondering what I could tell her.
Absolutely. Dr. Carron?
As we're now there finishing up, um, a number of courses that teachers have developed for over the summer. So of course, it's going to be language and mathematical programs that students can sign up for. But then we also have a number of programs that have been created such as problem solving. Um, Ms. Schreiber actually created, what's the name that you taught?
Doing it stem, but it's now called STEAM, so it's science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics.
Oh.
We, we have, we have the instructors who are creating them to come up with catchy, catchy phrases that might intrigue students to, uh, participate. We have one on babysitting skills. We have one that's also focused on, um, the theaters and the arts as far as creating different plays and playwriting. So the whole thing was, we said it was summertime, so we understand that we don't want it to be too intense, heavy. So every single week it's like an hour lesson where they would have to possibly read an article, and then there's an activity that goes along with it. And then the teacher who's assigned to that course would then be providing feedback on a weekly basis to the students on the work that they did. So of course it's not a grade, but it's more like an enrichment and kind of just keeping students active with what's going on, and it's going to span over the course of ten weeks. I think we have a total of thirteen, twelve weeks?
About twelve.
About twelve weeks. So we're going to have this go across the span of ten weeks.
When do they have to sign up?
The, um, the courses have to be finalized by April, so the development and all of that. And then what we're going to do is once we have all the names, we have little blurbs written up, and then what we're going to do is we're going to survey the students in grades five, six, and seven as far as what they're interested in signing up for. And then from there, um, we're asking that each student sign up for one to two courses, and then they can participate in that. So of course we're not going to limit them, but we kind of want to see what the enrollment will look like, and the benefit is that they would get to keep their Chromebook over the course of the summer months and still participate in an activity. So if the family's going away on vacation or something's going on, I know sometimes with summer programs that can be complicated, so this kind of keeps them involved with the school and academics and utilizing the Chromebooks at the same time.
Okay, so you will have a lineup of the courses until the end of April?
Probably by mid to end of April, so we'll have that put together for the students.
Okay, all right. I just want to keep her posted because she's been asking.
No. We've been trying to put it out there to gain their interest in, uh, what's going on, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good question. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we do not have executive session tonight, so shall we close meeting to an end?
Just a reminder, the next meeting, um, in April, the six o'clock session, is going to be the public hearing of the fifteen sixteen budget. Work session will immediately follow, immediately follow if time permits. Seven o'clock will be the regular meeting.
And the date is April?
April twenty...
Twenty ninth. Twenty nine.
Twenty ninth. It's the wedding party.
I'm sorry, it's on the, on the bachelor.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.